And that, you're welcome to say for the whole meeting, you can be excused whenever you wish.
Are you sure? I'm going to go to the next stop there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got the issue.
Thank you, that's very kind of you. Thank you.
We came back to our regular agenda. Citizens comments, any citizens who wish to address council this evening? Hughes.
Yes, Corey Hughes, 665 South 15th. I have a question about, I was hoping to get our solicitor to hear me, I have a question more on the legal side that she may be able to answer, but maybe you can get the question to her here one day this week, or whatever, and you know, get back to me, but if there's any city documents down here that anybody wants to get copies of, I know, you know, in the past, protocols, come see Malia with a written request of what you want, and are pretty much any and all of your correspondences, public information?
Yes, private public.
What do we do in the instance when a public official uses their personal email address for correspondence about city business? How do I obtain that, or how does anybody obtain it?
Well-
Who do I request it from?
That I can't answer for you, so I'd have to have a solicitor respond to that. She will not be back at all this week, she'll be coming in late over the weekend, she's out of state.
Okay.
And I'll be sure that we ask her that question, try and have an answer for you.
Yeah, because I need to know how you get personal emails of them. I mean, I've got some personal emails, I want them all.
I'll see what kind of an answer I get for you, that's the best I can offer you this evening.
Alright, thanks.
The other citizen who wishes to address council tonight. Seeing none, reading, referring of communications and/or petitions, and petitions that we've presented to council tonight. Clark, you got any? Okay. There is a lot of correspondence that you have gotten this past two weeks, and I'll just fly through it very quickly. You have the receipts for the items to go on the ballot, for the three mil fire levy, and for the one mil recreation levy, everybody should have a copy of those. We have a certified letter from the Hunt County Health District, setting a hearing for 616 West Tennessee Avenue, and it's, excuse me, it is not a hearing, it is a letter knowing that the improvements made since March 16th of 2006 do not even come close to bringing the property within compliance of any of the Ohio Revised Code issues that were cited, so the next move is to, for the owner, Crystal J. Black, of 595 West Ohio Avenue, to respond to the health report on that. We have communications from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, where the emergency water issue, since we do not have everybody below the 15 grams per billion limit, has been extended another 90 days, as has the, what do I want to call it, the suspension of our operators, our past operators' license for operation of water treatment plant. Everybody should have a copy of those. We have a copy of a letter that all of you should have received, from Attorney Cardinal here in town, he has a question, or has a comment, I guess, on ordinance, an old ordinance from 1998, that appears to be in conflict, or possibly in conflict, with the Charter Amendment, and I passed it to the solicitor, and she responded, that she's reviewed it, and she believes that she'd like to have a meeting with the Legislative Committee, so Betty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes.
Do you have a copy, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, very good. And we have correspondence from Mrs. Kirsch, Ms. Kirsch, and she has supplied us with a amended CAT ordinance that was drawn by a attorney in Bethesda, Maryland, and I know in talking to the solicitor, since she couldn't be here tonight, she has some concerns about the ordinance, especially in the area of compounds, and storage, and stuff along those lines that are in here, and she asked if we referred this to Legislative again, and maybe you can talk about these at the same meeting. Very good. We have a request, a written request for a mutual aid agreement with the Alliance Police Department for Law Enforcement, and the chief has presented this to us, and Mr. Flowers in Safety, you want to take care of this.
Yes.
Can I do this?
Um, yeah, I'm sure I do somewhere.
Also, Mr. Gurello has appointed Barry Schroeder as EMS Fire Captain, effective date was April 19th, 2016, so those, now all offices at the fire station are still, all officers are in place, correct Chief?
Yes, sir.
You have a copy of the controlling, leading copper strategy to the village of Sebring, to Solubility, and this is what has been prepared by Quicksaw, and was sent out in a timely fashion, had to be there in the 18th, to the Environmental Protection Agency, and I think they have about five, five- Correct, remember correctly, they have 60 days to review and comment. Along with the water, there's been a press release on the, from April 20th through May 11th, on water distribution, and the clerk and I attended on April 12th, an auditor's office presentation on fraud prevention and detection, in terms of compliance for status for our finances. Malia and I both completed that, and successfully completed that presentation. With that, I think that takes care of correspondence. Council committees and council representatives, finance, Mr. Hart.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, the finance committee has not met since our last council meeting, therefore our motion to pay bills when funds become available in the amount of $99,582.20 would be in order.
Second. Motion by Hart, seconded by Wright, to pay the bills when funds become available, questions or comments?
Mayor, any questions or comments? This is for bills received from 4-9 of 2016 through 4-22 of 2016, and those bills that are outstanding in this pay period are as follows: AT&amp;T, $5,082.65; Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, $18,936.7; Henderson Electric, $6,894.67; OP Aquatics, $5,195; Pelton Environmental Products, $32,250; Treasure State of Ohio, $1,800. Those were bills that were outstanding to be paid. We also received refunds of $6,786.60 from OWDA, and a Condor Capital Corp. for $735, total amount refund, $7,521.60, and that would conclude my report on finance.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, court call or roll?
I grow.
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any else under finance?
Uh, no, Mayor, I am not to discuss.
Legislative, Ms. Householder?
No meeting, Mayor.
Okay, tonight we got the, the, running the animal ordinance, and Attorney Cardinal's letter.
And I will get with Malia, and we'll get that schedule, that meeting scheduled.
Solicitor will not be returning to the admissions, trying to play on anything for her for that reason.
Okay.
Okay, capital improvement, Mr. Wright?
Uh, no meeting, Mayor.
Business annexation of land, Mr. Kennel, and I don't know of any, unless Mr. I grow or Mr. Hart have anything?
Nothing.
Service maintenance, Mr. I grow.
Yeah, Mayor, the committee met last Friday at 4:30, topic of the discussion was the spring cleanup, attending was the Mayor, myself, Councilman Wright, and Councilman Flowers, the village received two quotes, based on 2,000 homes in the village, we had, 2012 was the last major cleanup that we had, and it was $18,900 was spent at that time. The two quotes we got, arrow disposal, $17,800, it was a flat rate, we got one from Kimball Disposal, they wanted per truckload, $1,168 per truckload, and they was estimating eight to 12 truckloads, which they said was conservative, if it only took 12 truckloads. 12 truckloads came up to $14,000, using air rate, so if you go over just four truckloads of what they wanted, you'll rip over $18,000, almost $18,700. It's our act of discussion, it was our committee's recommendation that we go with arrow disposal, with a flat rate of $17,800. We set up a date of September, or, excuse me, June 18th of this year, and after we discussed that, it came to our attention that the 18th is the Antique Fair downtown, plus, I think they're having, Shrek and Gos Park was having a musical that night. So, Malia got in touch with the arrow disposal, and he gave us three dates that we could choose from, if we'd like to change it tonight, the 11th, the 18th was, I just brought up, or the 25th. The 11th is a week after Carnival, gives you a whole week for people to put the trash out, prior to, you don't want it out there during the parade, afterwards, so you have to be, set it out Sunday night or something, for the following week. The 25th is a week and a half, or a little less, before 4th of July, so it's up to the committee, what do they want to go with? You want to go with after the Carnival, which would be the 11th? He's receptive to any three dates, all we've got to do is let him know tomorrow, the 18th or the 25th. I would recommend the 11th.
I definitely want to cross off the 18th, right?
Yes.
We don't want to be, yeah, we don't want to be doing that.
Yeah, well, you know, I think 11th would probably be the, sooner we get it out of here, the better.
11th would be good.
Alright, yep, I'm good with that.
So, there's been legislation that's going to be proposed tonight, all we have to do is put the date in, add the date to it, right, Malia?
No.
No, it's already in there?
No, it's just, it doesn't-
Doesn't spell out the date, we just have to tell them.
That's tomorrow.
Okay. Anyhow, it's going to be legislation down the road, they gave us a list of what's limited to be picked up, I won't bother going over that, that's going to be in the paper, letting you know what you can put in, in the trash, and the meeting was adjourned to 5 o'clock. That's it.
Very good, very good. And, let's see, Safety, Mr. Flowers?
No meeting since we last met, Mr. Mayor, but the mutual aid, and then we do have the Smith Township contract to go over, so we will be having a meeting soon.
And, Mr. I grow, before we leave committees?
Yes.
Your committee is still working, I think, with Ms. Ward on the phone, AT&amp;T bill?
I don't think I had that.
Well, we authorized that new structure, but it appears there's a, that's one of the questions I have tonight is, I mean, so, we agreed to a new term, but they continue to overcharge us.
Correct.
So, what, what action can we take? The solicitor needs to get involved in that very, very quickly, because we believe that's going to be upwards of like $400,000 that they've overcharged the village over the last, last three to five years, so I think we've messed around with our rep long enough, let's get her on the horn, and let's get somebody drugged down here to court and get them arrested, if that's what we have to do, to get this thing resolved.
If you, we want to put forward a motion to turn the AT&amp;T bill over to the solicitor for action, I can entertain that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Second.
Motion by Wright, seconded by Flowers, questions or comments? Court call or roll?
I grow.
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Her.
Motion carries, soon as she gets back, I will inform her.
She is aware.
She is aware, okay.
Who doesn't know us, Brian?
Okay, Mr. I grow?
Yes.
On a number of occasions, there have been a request about looking at a sidewalk grant, and I think it's the school to school is what it's called.
Right.
Would you take that into your committee, and see if it's plausible for us to do anything with that?
I will.
Okay, very good, thank you.
That was, I can probably bring you up to date a little bit on that, that was done in 2007, and the grant request was for $192,000, that's nine years ago, and that was from 15th Street to 19th Street, 2,000 feet, a four-foot wide sidewalk on West Virginia Avenue, at that time.
Okay. If you follow through, and either it's a practical application, we could try and-
I think there was several issues that they had to meet, that they didn't meet, is why they didn't get the grant, grant was turned down.
Okay.
There is a program that you can get into, and it's tough to get on that, any type of federal or state grant, so.
Okay.
I'll look into it.
Blame it on the water, maybe it'll help.
Okay, thank you, Mr. I grow. Parks, Mr. Wright?
Parks did meet Thursday, April 14th, and you were in attendance, so I will turn the meeting over to you. I do see that they did put the gravel down at South Side 3, I know that was one of the things that was on the list to be done, so that, that has been completed, but I was not in attendance at that meeting, Mayor.
They talked about getting some gravel, getting a price on, getting some asphalt repaired, at the main park mod, Civic Center, ordering the playground mulch, not the decorative mulch, but the stuff that goes around-
Engineered.
Engineered mulch. The lights are now done at South Side, pavilions, both east and west, and the lights in between. I think there's still two trees to come down, but, but as of right now, all the brush and debris from the trees that they have cut down for that, has been picked up and taken away, and they want us to ground it a good part, before they try to do anything else, because the trees are, the trees are done, Mr. Slazer just said, and I drove by there actually, and seen those were down, so. They're down?
Yeah.
The ones in front of the school building?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All except the stump, right? Okay. And I think the last thing that they, they talked about was they started making some plans for 4th of July. I don't know, Slazer, did anything?
Nope, you got it covered, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Fanning Zonetry, Ms. Householder?
No meeting, Mayor.
Civil service, Ms. Householder?
No meeting.
The Fireman's Ben's Board meeting, the Veterans Memorial Committee has met, we've picked out a stone, we've picked out a location for placement of the stone, the memorial plaque has been stored properly, so as soon as Hills Memorial gets the foundation in, and gets the stone in, they will mount the plaque, they tell us that we'll be ready for 4th of July. Yes, for 4th, no, might be ready for Memorial Day, if the weather cooperates with it, so that project is done. Anything else under council committees or council representatives? Okay, managers report, I don't know, oh, you guys, you, excuse me, council person, received your manager's report for 416, or 418 through 421, as well as April 11th through the 15th, the only thing I could add to what you have in the written report, is that the meeting in Columbus, we had a week ago, Thursday, last Thursday, 21st, we all vote for, we went very well, EPA is happy with the results, we're seeing with the ortho-phosphate, they're very happy with the way things went with the testing of water, they also informed us that we had our choice of how we wanted to distribute water right now, the only ones that the order is applicable to are those homes who have had their water tested, and are still above the 15, and that number keeps dropping each test cycle, so we spilled some water to hand out, but we're going to have to change our policy a little bit, and start weaning out those who have been getting water, and have not had their water tested yet, so, to the public, if you've not had your waters tested, I would take advantage of doing that very, very quickly, because the program's just about to come to a stretch of halt, so everybody has a fair warning on that. Other than that, I don't know, Mayor.
I do have one on Rick's memo here for dated 421, the second paragraph advises that his, he's putting together the sickly time bank program, very last one, he says he needs a service person than a member of council, I believe when we discussed this, that you had asked if there was any volunteers, I volunteered to do that, he may not have just remembered that, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, make sure it's in a minute's, next meeting?
You know, got to get somebody from the service department, but beyond that.
Okay, anything else in the manager's?
Yeah, I got a question, Mike, so it looks like the executive board of the fire department's asking for an EMS lieutenant, are you going to put that over into safety, so we can look at that, or?
Well, we already have the 1992 ordinance in legislative to redo that.
Okay.
It's, it needs revamped from top to bottom.
So that'll, that'll take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last legislative committee?
Yeah.
Was it then?
Yes.
We talked about the rules and the regs, and the-
There was three or four things that needed to be changed.
Three or four things that involve the fire department, just going to require some amended current ordinance, to be able to deliver what they're asking for, and nothing's out of reach.
No, I just didn't, I want to make sure that didn't get lost in the shuffle there.
Okay, short of that, and since we had a little confusion over between the chief and I, or who's going to actually fill in for Rick, I'm going to ask the department head, Mr. Shane, do you have anything you need to have council aware of, or?
No, sir.
Mr. Hart?
No, sir.
Chief, Yersey?
No, sir.
And Chief Heverly, bounce down.
All right. Excuse me?
Do you have anything you need to address council for, Chief?
I'd like to maybe show everyone a short exact session of personnel regarding, something on sickly, if I could.
Personnel?
Yep, and the definition would be, actually, on the extended sickly, Mr. Rick, if that's a publication, I don't know if it's-
It is.
Is it?
Personnel, that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll deal with that at the end of the meeting.
If I may, yes.
Okay, assuming no action to be taken?
No action.
Okay, very good. All right, ordinances and resolutions, we have none on the agenda, but if you intend, Mr. I grow, to deal with the spring cleanup, a motion would be in order to suspend council rules. Second. Motion by I grow, seconded by Wright, questions or comments?
You did it.
Hearing none, court call or roll?
I grow.
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Her.
Motion carries, okay, this comes from Service Maintenance Committee, and this is sponsored by Councilman number I grow, this is ordinance authorizing municipal manager to execute a contract for the 2016 spring cleanup with Arrow Disposal LLC, and declaring an emergency. Council having heard the ordinance read by title only, with the emergency clause, what's your pleasure?
Make the motion, the ordinance be adopted as read by title only, with the emergency clause.
Second. Motion by I grow, seconded by Flowers, no, excuse me, Hart, to read, to adopt as presented, any questions or comments? This would be the $17,800 expenditure that the committee recommended, and the emergency is to ensure timely removal of deposits of rubbish resulting from the spring cleanup. Any other questions or comments?
Just that it's going to be Saturday, June 11th.
Saturday, June 11th. Got it, matter of review?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Court call or roll?
I grow.
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Flowers?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Her.
Motion carries, ordinance is adopted as presented, so we have spring cleanup going. Okay, second passage, citizens' comments, any citizen who should address council. Anthony, if you would please, your name and, and I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name.
Oh, no problem, my name's Anthony Cattulo, I'm the manager of business development, representing Mahone County at the Regional Chamber, so I wanted to come here and introduce myself, the Mayor and I met about two months ago, I was taking over for Tom Presby, maybe some of the folks here know Tom, he'd had, he had been in my position for about 15 years, and I just took over for him, so I wanted to address council, and I'll be the point of contact when it comes to economic development, all throughout Mahone County, creating jobs, maintaining jobs, and improving the existing assets here in the village of Sebring, is all part of my responsibility, so if you have any questions, or you ever want to reach out to me for any types of issues or needs, feel free to reach out.
Do you have a business card, sir?
Absolutely.
How are you on sidewalks?
Sidewalks. We'll use that later.
Anthony, you know, you're in the middle of a water crisis, and about the first day or two, we were running around with chickens on our heads.
Thank you.
If it's right in and help, I should, I should say.
Absolutely.
Okay, Anthony, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, under other business, just a couple things from my office yet, on Friday, the clerk and I will attend the public records training, and I think that we have everybody taken care of on that, correct, for their term, and today I had the opportunity to meet with the new director of the East Gate Regional Council of the government, that's our funding warehouse, for all funds, and he comes to the East Gate as a former ODOT District 4 director, a professional engineer, and has a good background on transportation issues in the area, 4 County area. With that, any other business come before council, Mr. Wright?
Mayor, I'm sure the public's seen it, but congratulations to the PD, they stepped it up last week, and took down some criminals, which was good, long overdue, I'm sure, but they took them down.
They deserve the credit.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would echo those thoughts, also the outlying departments that helped in that.
It's unfortunate that happens in this town, but I would like to thank you and those involved, I know that one of them came close to home.
Absolutely.
And-
They're all close to home.
Well, they are, they are very close to them, and it's, it's time we get rid of those things.
I have something, at this time, per the request of the manager and the letter given to Malia, I'd like to make a motion at this time to appoint Chief Heverly as acting manager until the manager returns.
Second.
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 Motion by Flowers, seconded by Householder, questions or comments?
Just to give you an idea, Rick was, wants to give some of the department heads a chance to, to do some other stuff, so that's, that's why he's doing this.
Any other questions or comments?
He wanted to pick Bill, Bill's too busy. I think he'd look good in a suit and a tie. In a jumble, in a jumble.
I'm going to put the chief on the spot, is that something that you-
I think he'd look good in a suit and a tie. In a jumble.
I'm going to put the chief on the spot. Is that something that you really wanted to take on?
Well, I act to the wishes of the council. If this is council's wishes, I'll do the best job I can. If that's through, if it's through the vote, that's, so, that's all my own statement.
Any questions or comments?
He wanted to pick Bill. Bill's too busy. I think he'd look good in a suit and a tie. In a jumble.
I'm going to put the chief on the spot. Is that something that you really wanted to take on?
Well, I act to the wishes of the council. If this is council's wishes, I'll do the best job I can. If that's through, if it's through the vote, that's, so, that's all my own statement.
Any questions or comments? Bearing none, court call or roll?
Igro.
Aye.
Householder.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
No. Motion carries. Word of one. Okay, you've had the recommendation of the chief for a brief executive session?
No, I just make the motion to go into executive session, discuss personnel for long-term sickly.
No business?
No business.
No business afterward? Got a motion and a second? Flowers and Wright? Questions or comments? Court call or roll?
Igro.
Aye.
Householder.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Wright.